Call a meeting to order. We'll begin with pleasure allegiance. I invite you to join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Strand?
Here.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg? Pepcorn?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Well, this was the site. We just had four new police officers join our force. Three out of the four are women, so we're starting to get more changes in the department. But the great news is, is that the federal government has approved the cop grant in which we applied for two positions, and we were approved for one extra police officer, which brings us to one more community officer in the public. The other interesting thing I ask Chief Todd how we're doing on vacancies, since we've always struggled with that since we started, and we only have two vacancies right now for the Fargo Police Department, so we have covered a lot of ground over the last few years for that to happen. A little curious, because West Fargo is going to start competing, I think, for officers as well, but we've been doing really well. Engineering, the Department of Homeland Security, and FEMA have determined the city of Fargo will increase from a class, or increase to a Class V from a Class VII in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System due to the floodplain management activities implemented by the city. So if the city engineering department has good ideas of what to do with our floodplain management, we do better. This class change for the city of Fargo residents means that there will be a 25% discount on flood insurance. So we've always been a little concerned about what we do in our floodplain management. Our previous discount was 15, so those people who have flood insurance, it'll be a better deduction for them. FEMA commended Fargo's floodplain management actions and determination to lead the community to be a more disaster-resistant, which enhances public safety, property protection, and protects the natural functions of the floodplains. So that's good news. In health, all high schools and middle schools in Cass County have now Narcan nasal spray as part of preventive community-wide response to opioid crisis. Fargo-Cass Public Health is working with the area schools to train facility and staff members on how to administer Narcan. So far, there have been no reported opioids overdose deaths of the students, faculty, or community members at the schools. However, the schools do recognize the need for expanded awareness, education, and access to Narcan. Public Health also recently hosted a heart and soul community cafe as an idea to end hunger and food insecurity in an area by providing healthy and delicious food for all who walk through the door. About 75 guests were served at the event. And this other thing is interesting. Thirteen people have completed the first stepping on fall prevention workshop, which helps at-risk individuals carry out health behaviors that reduce the fall, or the risk of falls. Experts in the fields of vision, pharmacy, community safety, physical therapy helped educate participants, who also learned balance exercise and other skills to prevent falls. Public Health plans to hold two more workshops in the spring, and I think people should try these things. Most common thing you get is upper thigh weakness, and people get busted hips, so it's really important that we figure out these fall issues. Library, the library strategic planning survey closed November 10th, and this is really fun. More than 2,100 people took the survey. The library board and library staff are working with all the survey results and will create a three-year strategic plan that will meet the needs and expectations of our residents. Tim's here or not. There are also very several interesting programs for residents of the library over the next couple of weeks. A movie series featuring film noir classics, a presentation about North Dakota nurses who served in World War II, teen crafts classes featuring homemade mints, and a storytime featuring the classic Nutcracker with a visit of some of the dancers from the F.A. Ballet, and a Reader's Theater workshop for kids. They always keep things going over there. Police. The police are pretty excited about this. They don't usually get into rapping, but on December 1st at 7:15 at the Fargo Theater, the police department will host the premiere of Unity, a music video featuring Officers Bloom and Niemeyer and students from several Fargo public schools. The event will showcase the Community Trust Officer Program. And I want to assure you, Chief Todd will not be singing at this event. We have other officers to do that. But I think it's a very well-done program, and I think you'll find it interesting that the department came up with this, but in our community outreach, this is something that's come about. Transit. Tony, you got this thing going. Matbus quarter days will take place Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, as well as every Saturday in December. We're pushing shopping, huh? Riders can board matbus fixed route vehicles for only 25 cents each trip. Also, on each quarter day, drawing boxes will be placed on the buses, and riders can register for prizes provided by Midwest Communications. Good idea, huh? Other, the National Council for Home Safety and Security, an organization of companies and individuals in the home safety and security industry, recently published its ranking of the best cities to raise kids in the USA out of 526 qualifying cities. Fargo made the top 100, ranking 78th, and was the only city in North Dakota included in the list. The number-one spot went to San Ramon, California, but at least we're a great place to raise kids. And then this year's Excel Energy Holiday Lights Parade will be held on Tuesday, November 21st, beginning at 6:30 PM. The parade starts in Moorhead and crosses First Avenue North Bridge to Broadway, then up Broadway to Sixth Avenue North. The temperatures will be a little clue, but most of us know how to dress for the cold weather, so please turn out to the event. Very good. We don't have a long agenda, so we're trying to make time go faster here. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2017 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 33?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pepcorn and Garrick. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Ben Hushka, applications for abatement or refund of taxes 4469, 4470, and 4471 submitted by Kendrick M. Olson of Paradigm Tax Group, representing Walmart Real Estate Business Trust for property at 3757-55 Avenue South, 4731 13th Avenue South, and 4731 South for the 2015 tax year, reducing the valuations by said properties. Ben, I thought that the President's tax plan hasn't gone through yet. What's this about, something 2015?
Well, we have received a few abatements. The statutory deadline to file for 2015 was November 1st, and we received these on October 31st. So I'd like to just start with a brief summary introduction. This agenda item and item number 35 are five abatements for reduction in valuation submitted by two applicants on four properties. The applicants in both cases are not the property owner or employed by the property owner. They are tax rep firms who are in the business of reducing property taxes by any means possible for clients who engage their services. Now, we don't know that they work on a contingent fee basis. I know years ago, tax rep firms did. They were paid based on the amount of reduction in taxes that they would secure for the client. But they do tend to advertise quite heavily on their websites about the amount of valuation and reductions in taxes that they have been able to secure for some of their largest clients. So it is a big part of their advertising on how much they can reduce the taxes. Their approach really isn't the same as the tax reps of the old days. They would, most of them anyway, would come around and visit us about once a year just to go over the information on the properties they have locally in their portfolio. We'd engage in some dialogue about the local market, about the value on their property, the value on competing properties in the market, and occasionally, they would see things that would maybe hit their tolerance range flags and ask us for an informal review, which we would do. These folks don't really do that anymore. They simply file abatements with the county. In fact, both applicants today filed on all of the properties under the same ownership all across North Dakota, so all the Walmarts, all the CashWise, were filed on that same date. Excuse me. Another thing in recent years, the tax rep industry has developed a new methodology that they use, and only use comparable sales of properties that have vacated and are vacant and either up for sale or up for lease. It's called the dark store theory. If you Google the term, you'll get a lot of hits relating to this technique of evaluating operating stores in good markets as abandoned and vacant, and the huge reductions that, and tax revenue loss in the taxing jurisdictions in areas where they've been successful with that technique. All five appeals today are properties in some of the best market areas of our metro area, and the owners are not only not abandoning and vacating these properties, they're building new stores and remodeling. In fact, one of the stores under appeal today just took out a building permit to do some remodeling. So they're clearly not dark stores, they're operating properties. Another thing I'd like to just touch on before we get into the individual appeals is the standard of value in North Dakota for assessment, and the standard of review for these types of abatement processes, and the burden, and the standard of burden of proof. North Dakota Century Code 570201 sub 15 defines the value for assessment purposes as true and full value, which is the value by determining earning a productive capacity, if any, market value, if any, and all other matters that affect the actual value of the property. As far as the standard of review, there's several mostly Supreme Court cases, Alvedal versus Grand Forks County, Shaw versus Burley County, and several others that basically say that the standard of review is the local boards are, it's their duty to weigh the factual information about the value of the property, not the court. The court will not substitute their opinion of value, even if there is more convincing evidence produced. And the local board is not considered to be arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious if they have considered sufficient information and used good logic and reasoning in the action that they take. The court will not set aside a value because of a difference of opinion and value, which is what we have in both cases tonight. And they also, as far as burden of proof, the courts have said that in the absence of contrary evidence, the assessor is assumed to have performed their duty properly. We feel that we have provided sufficient evidence in the written material and what I'll present to you tonight to uphold our recommendation, and we don't feel that the applicant has provided anything that indicates why they feel we have erred in how we place the values on these properties. So with that, we can go to the first abatement, number 4469, the Walmart property on 55th Avenue South. I would like to note, and I'm sure you saw in the letter that they presented, that they indicate that we did not give them notice of this meeting according to statute. Statute says that once we get the application from the county, we have 10 days to notify the applicant of the hearing date, and that hearing date has to be within 60 days. We received the application on November 3rd. On November 6th, I sent the notice, and this letter that, they said that they still haven't received the notice. I do have a recording on voicemail from the applicant on November 9th saying that they were in receipt of the notice. In fact, I can play it for you if you want to hear it. So they did receive the notice. I might add that I did see some of the other places across the state where they applied, they sent that same letter, and they also said they sent their notice out in plenty of time, too. So they, there seems to be a little attention to detail problem with some of the information that they have submitted. And by the way, if you look through their information, you see a lot of, a lot of screenshots from our system, from the county system, from national sources. We put a lot of time and effort into these appeals to make sure that we cover the bases and give you accurate, sufficient information. That's all done at taxpayer expense. So what we've given you in the written information is the certified values that we had for 2015, as well as 14, 13, and 12, the applicant's requested value, which in this case is about 46% of our value on this property. We've also provided you comparable sales, and how our value on a per-square-foot basis compares to those sales, as well as comparable properties, how our value on those properties compares to, look at how equitable we are with this property and others. And based on that, we feel that we have enough information that indicates that our value is in line with the market and how we're valuing other properties, and we recommend denial of this abatement. And basically, the same information is provided on all three of these properties for 2015, the Walmart on 13th Avenue and Sam's Club, so I don't know if you want to...
Just for the public, they're asking a reduction of value from $18,005,000 to $8,006,000 on the 50, Walmart on 55 Avenue, the one on 13, $15,006,000 to $9,008,000, and the one, Sam's Club, from $8,008,000 to $6,001,000. And it sounds like your team did a good job of doing everything, Ben, so we didn't get caught on a legal nuance or something, a public notice, so there couldn't be a thing that we did not handle it right. And you do handle these right every time. We've seen them come in, but it's an interesting tactic by this company.
And the only information they really did provide that relates in any way to market is a list of 26 sales, none of which are from the local market, and 14 of the 26 actually occurred after the assessment date, which was February 1st of 2015, for the 2015 assessment.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hushka, I'm curious, in these three applications, did any of these properties qualify for or receive any targeted exemptions or incentives?
No, they did not.
Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to deny item 34, all properties.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I make a quick comment? I wish there was a way, so they basically, we have 232 pages of junk that our staff had to put into our minutes, transmit to all of us. We all had to read it. I wish there was a way that we could charge them for us having to do all this rigmarole. And no offense to attorneys, speaking to our current city attorney, but this gives them a bad name. I think this is a waste of our time, and I wish, if there was any way, I wish we could figure out a way to charge them, because it's ridiculous.
Well, I might have a suggestion. We've kind of tossed this around, not only in our office, but statewide, because these are becoming to be a problem. These appeals, like I say, they applied all across the state of North Dakota. The reason they couldn't be here tonight is because they had, like, four other meetings scheduled across the state, and they don't really need to put a lot of time and effort. Somebody sits at the desktop and gets on the screen, prints all this stuff out, files the abatements, and we have to go through all these processes and work. I would suggest that we maybe look at developing a policy that, at least on these larger commercial properties, big-box stores seem to be the issue now, because they use that dark store theory, that we establish some standard of what they need to provide us in order for us to even consider, and I don't know if legally we can do that, we may have to talk to Eric, but that we require something like a certified appraisal by a certified appraiser. A certified appraiser can't throw out values unless they've got documented market support to do that. One of the applicants, I believe, on the Walmart properties, they did indicate on the application that they have ordered an appraisal on the property, which I find kind of curious, how they know the appraiser's going to come up with the values that they're asking, because an appraiser can't give a value unless they've completed the assignment and did all the work. So maybe by the time it gets to the county, they may have an appraisal, but I'm curious how they know what the appraiser's going to come up with at some small percentage of our value. But we could certainly, I mean, if it's something you want to consider, we could certainly try and put together some kind of a standard of what type of information we would request, and it be in that format when they submit these applications, so that you get sufficient enough information from them as well as from us.
Might want to consider that with Eric. Any other commissioners? Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 35, applications for abatement or refund taxes 4465 and 4466 submitted by Blake Newell and GAW Chatham and Associates, representing Coburn's on the property at 1433 South for the 2016 and 2017 tax years, reducing valuation from $9,600,000 to $5,589,810. Again, Ben Hushka to explain.
This is very similar to the previous with a couple of small exceptions. One note is that they, this appeal was before you as a city board of equalization, requesting basically the same reduction, a little bit different value, but they submitted the exact same information for the board of equalization. You denied it as a city board, the county denied it as the county board of equalization, and it went to the state board of equalization, and they denied it for 2017, and they're back asking for the same reduction. The only thing, other than the same information that we gave you on the Sam's Club as far as our certified values, the applicant's requested value, how our values relate to comparable sales, and competing properties, in this write-up, we've also included some Minnesota sales that are non-dark stores, that are operating stores, which they didn't seem to have in the data they provided us. And we are considerably lower per square foot on the operating stores of CashWise stores and the other big-box stores that are out there. They only selected the dark stores, but there were sales in Minnesota. In fact, virtually all the sales they sent are from Minnesota and not our local market. But they did not include any, and there were about five or six sales that were operating stores that sold for quite a bit more than we have on this property. So I would again recommend denial of this abatement.
Moved to deny.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thanks, Ben. Public hearings, application by Central Law Office, LLC, for payment in lieu of tax exemption pilot for the project located at 7197th Street North, which applicant will use the operation of 34 one-bedroom apartment project. Ben Hushka to explain.
Yes, this application is for a apartment project in the downtown area plan. Our current policy calls for a pilot at the equivalent of a five-year 100% exemption, five-year 75% exemption on the building. The tax exempt review committee did meet and recommends approval based on our current policy. This also is under the category that needs to be sent notification to the county and the school district. The school district has opted in on this incentive at 100% of our recommendation. The county opted in for only the first five years at the 100%. So the table that I provided with the application that has the yellow in the grids, the far-right grid, the first yellow column, would be the additional pilot payment that the county, that would go to the county after the first five years for their share of the tax. So basically, the middle table, the first pilot payment, would be the total pilot that gets distributed to all the political subs, and because the county opted out of the last five years, they're made whole by an additional pilot payment of roughly 70, well, just under So that is the recommendation of the tax review committee to approve at 100% five years, 75 at five years, with the, that additional pilot that will go to the county.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this tax exemption? Speak, Craig? Do you want to speak?
Commissioners, I'm Jesse Craig with Craig Development. Here to discuss a little bit about the Cathedral Lofts project. It is a 34-plex apartment project, but we have currently changed around the unit mix a little bit to include some alcove and efficiency units, so our rents will start at $675,000. There will be enough parking so that each bedroom in this project has an indoor heated parking space, along with washer and dryer hookups for the units. They will, right now, are trying to get a rooftop patio on the project versus having the balconies hanging on the sides, so we're getting bids back on that. The project replaces a five-plex that already resides in this location. Have several garages facing the alley as well, several parking spaces that are rented Sanford. Project required no zoning change, was already zoned DMU. The main reason I'm here is to quickly go through what Ben was talking about in regards to the tax breaks. It always seems like we're talking about what the tax revenues are being lost. Right now, this project brings in $1,500 a year in taxable revenues. The property is, doesn't have more than probably a 10-year lifespan left on it. It's an older, original property to the downtown core. For looking at $1,500 a year, even if we take it over the five years that we're talking about for the first part of the pilot program, it's $7,500 in revenues that you could say are lost for the citizens of Cass County. In year six alone, even at 25%, it's $23,000. It's more than made up what was lost. If you look at the lifespan of that new property, it's 50 years, at $60,000 a year in income for taxes, you're talking about $3 million of income for the Cass County citizens. I guess, from my standpoint, it's a good investment. If I was just simply an investor looking at this, I would take that investment any day of the week. And it's for one project, not just, you know, 10 projects or something like that. I can tell you that without this incentive for the 10-year full pilot, the project will not happen. So if the incentive's not approved, I'm posed with two options on this property. First, I can delay the project. This is possible as the property is rented and supports itself, but just barely, because I paid $27 a square foot for the land. So the purchase price on that property is $406,000. When I purchased this property, it was completely vacant, but now has four tenants. Delaying this project would also allow me to see if the policy, city policy, changes. Second, I could sell the property to Sanford, who could possibly tear it down and put in this parking, because that's what, I actually outbid Sanford on the property to keep it as a rental property versus have them just make it into a parking lot. They've approached me on selling the property, so I could do that. I think what the average citizen doesn't understand is that if Sanford were to buy the property and make it into anything, they're tax exempt, so that's $0 for the county and city. Sanford would pay $0 on that property if they owned it. I'd like to have a handout if I could. One of the things that people talk about, and we've talked about it many times, is the cost to build downtown. I'm building a 14-plex on First Avenue South called 1023 Flats. I started to get bids in, and they're relevant in the fact that just on the excavating bid alone, which I can again hand out, 31% of the bid is just to haul the material off the site, store it, and bring it back. It's $9,200 on a $29,000 bid, because high-density DMU, there is no space on that property to store materials, be it dirt, pre-cast concrete, even brick, masons, things like that. We got 42-foot trusses that we have no place to put, so we had to literally store them off-site, and that cost, because of time and material. Other than that, I have nothing else. If I have any questions, you can answer.
Mr. Hushka, Garrick?
Well, what was the high end for the rent? So the efficiency is $675,000. What are the rest of them?
Two bedrooms, so one bedroom's would be $925,000.
$925,000?
Yep, and then two bedrooms with $1,350,000.
Okay. And was this a unanimous vote for you guys to pass it to the tax exempt review committee?
I think it was five-zero. I wasn't there, I was in Washington, and so I wasn't there. And so if you don't mind--
It was unanimous, right, Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
If you don't, do you mind if I jump, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So my main comment is, I think it's a great project, and I appreciate Jesse developing downtown. I think that what we have to look at as a group is, we need to have some low-income housing in these projects. And I know this isn't required for Jesse at this time, but I think that's, John brought up, whether it's ten percent or fifteen percent, that we have to start having that included in these projects downtown. And I don't know if you're willing to look at something like that, Jesse?
We have been.
Okay.
We're looking at the four percent and nine percent Lytechs, but they are exhaustive. They're not simple, but we are.
I do think this will be a challenge to developers as well, but I think we, from now on, especially with apartments, I have, I've already said, I'm not going to vote for apartments anymore, no matter where they are. I don't think that's, but if there's a low-income component to it, then I'm willing to support it. I guess that's, all right, that's--
And what we're trying to do is get a low-income versus affordable, too. And that's why we're trying to get those rents down into that six-hundred mark. And I know that's not low income, but to live downtown with a decent-sized apartment, you're talking six-hundred-and-seventy square feet with indoor heated parking at six-seventy-five, that's three hundred dollars a month cheaper than my one bedroom with two-twenty West. I think the biggest thing, and I'm not trying to make excuses in any way, shape, or form, but to try to get our arms around that Lytech, I mean, I've met with Lynn Funding's land and went through that whole process and things like that, and the four percent versus nine percent, it's a lot to try to get figured out in a short period of time.
I just wanted to--
Mr. Gary.
And this is for everybody. When we, as a city commission, grant a pilot, we don't lose any money, all right? We charge everybody else for what you're not paying. So if that's twenty-five thousand dollars, we just raise everybody else's taxes in the city twenty-five thousand dollars. If that's thirty-five million dollars for some exemptions that we give, that's thirty-five million, other people are going to pay for that. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not losing revenue, we're not up here deciding if we're going to lose money. If the government was losing money, I would vote for these incentives, okay? That's how it should work, but we don't do that. We just charge everybody else more. So as long as we're on the same page, that's how that works, I'm fine with that, but I don't want that narrative to get out there. That's not how it works.
Well, but you're charging it back to them through specials.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. So like, for instance, if I was to go build on Fifty-second Avenue South, I'd have specials assessed to my property, correct?
That's a whole different pot of money, for different reasons.
Okay, but downtown, I'm not being that. I have to pay that money upfront. Utilities, utilities in and out of that thing, water lines, I mean, I've had to pay for power lines to be moved. I mean, you're talking about bearing land versus trying to build downtown. So that's what the incentives were made for, weren't they, is to bring growth and new construction to downtown? I mean, I'm just following city policy. You guys set the policy.
Sure.
And I'm following it. And I'm almost made out to be the bad guy all the time, like I'm fleecing the community or taking advantage of it. I'm not. I'm following complete city policy. So I'm trying to bring in new tax dollars, and I'm getting voted no from commissioners, county now, and I'm just curious why.
Well, one, the bad guy thing, you've had more approved than you have denied, I'm quite sure. And two, if you followed the commission at all the last month or more, we're talking about special assessments now, and how I believe it's unfair process. So we agree on that, all right? So I always wanted to set the record clear on that one thing, that when someone doesn't pay, whether it's you or whatever developer gets a pilot, everyone else's taxes go up, and that's why I vote no against them.
Are they, just real quick, is that okay, if I ask you a question? So for five years, they're paying, citizens paying, but then what about the next forty-five years?
Their taxes don't go down, because we keep--
Tax base is going up, they should.
We add more and more incentives. The amount of incentives--
Not for my project, you're not.
You're one of, you're one of the many we give out.
I understand that, but look, how much land is left to build on downtown? Five percent, I think is what Austin Morris said from Monclave? There's not an expansive land downtown to build on, and the pilots forward the core downtown. So unless there's vacant lots all over the place, which I can't find, because after this project in Old Grove, I'm done. Because unless there's eminent domain passed through the state level, and the city says, let's take down that block, people don't have to sell. So it's either they're going, it's blight, and the property's not rentable, so there's no income produced from it, or I'm going to pay up a high-dollar amount to make it worth their while.
Mr. Strand, did you have something?
Mayor, I have some comment, and I have a motion.
You need Jesse anymore?
But I'm wondering if there's any other public comment before I address, bring forward a motion.
Okay, so you don't have a question for him?
I do not.
Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak to this pilot? Close public hearing. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. You know, I think this is an example where we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, where we have an existing policy in place that you can qualify for, as per the letter of the policy. And yet, the reality is, there's a shifting ground under us about our sentiment about this policy. We're seeing a shift in the number of commissioners supporting the existing policy, and I'm not so sure that will continue. So in that general context, you know, in my mind, the general purpose of pilots is job creation and primary sector, except the city allowed variances for that in downtown apartment construction projects. And so that's where we've come from. I prefer to follow policy. I prefer having policies in place that we can all adhere to and that they serve as a roadmap for everybody, for the applicants and for the decision-makers. So in that light, you know, recently, some of us just got back from a National League of Cities meeting just the last few days. There are lots of examples around the country of people who have addressed this similar issue, like as close as St. Louis Park, where they have a fifteen to eighteen percent requirement for affordability components in apartments if people come to the public trough. And so that's where I'm at. I, for a variety of reasons, don't support pilots for apartments. They don't create jobs, it's not primary sector. I also don't support the notion of a very loose, non-defined definition of affordability. And in some people's eyes, I don't want to contribute to gentrification without acknowledging the desires and needs of the citizenry as well. So in that light, I present the following motion. I move that we place a moratorium on this and other such pilot requests for apartments until the tax exempt review committee has considered and recommended updated policies which would incorporate affordable housing requirements into future pilot applications.
Your second?
Second.
Your discussion?
I think part of the problem you have, Commissioner Strand, is that you've wanted policy, you keep following the present policy. Secondary issue on pilots is they take out blight, and presently, there's blight at the site he's talking about. The third item is just exactly what he says, he can sell it to Sanford, and they'd pay no taxes on it, so it does go a little bit against that. This went unanimously through the tax exempt committee, so they have followed policy. The applicant has followed policy as well. Presently, if he has this exemption for the time he has it, taxes will be paid. We have no additional new taxes that come on board until the exemption is over. We have many properties downtown that have paid the same tax for many years and not increased in value. If we look at our tax exempt policy, what we've gone is from ten million dollars a property to three-hundred-and-twenty-five, ten million dollars has grown to three-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars with the property. So we have had that improvement. If we talk about affordability, the cost for what you're talking about, six-ninety-five, is actually very reasonable for the people who are going to work in downtown and doing work downtown with a heated garage as well. So it is a little hard when we try to do the ten to fifteen percent affordable housing, because that's difficult policy unless you begin to write it into our policy. But it's also, the rate of return is the issue that we get. As far as I see it, this thing went through policy a hundred percent, and it was the policy that we presently have. So I have to speak against a moratorium only because I think you could have another discussion about that in the policy group, but I don't think it should influence President Suffolk for us, but that's just my thoughts. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And I understand completely your thoughts there, but, you know, I have twice now, to my knowledge, requested that the tax exempt review committee review this discussion. And that's still my request, is to get that on an agenda, vet it, and see if we have any recommendations that can possibly gain the support of the commission going forward, if not where we're at. So that's my desire. Before we affect a decision on this particular project, I'd like us to view it in the bigger picture of, is there a will to affect a different policy, and if so, what would those policies be? And if not, we're back to square one, where it's a yea or nay when it comes to the city commission.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
It's, I'm just going to go back to what we said. What I wish we could do now is have Jesse go back and maybe work with Lynn to try to get a little bit more firmer numbers, because we, I'll go back, I don't support us financing apartments anymore. At some point, that was a legit thing, but that is not how we should be, that is not what we should be doing now. So I don't support it, and I apologize. I was out of town the last tax exempt, so that's why we didn't have that. That discussion should take place, and it will take place. But, and the other thing, we cannot afford to lose independent developers, so this is a challenging thing. So Jesse, I hope you don't get the feeling that we've got a target on you, but you just happen to be going through this. But low-income housing is a very big concern of our city, and if we don't put a lot of weight on that, that's going to be a growing issue. And so, let me just ask you, so are you willing to work with us to, and I know it might be challenging, but just to do some low-income housing in your project?
On this one, I can't be, and I'll be honest with you. I've met with Mayor Mahoney, and I have land that we're trying to, if I can find a place for the gentleman to go, I'm going to put low-income housing on it, and it'll be a mixed use. But that, I can buy the land for fourteen dollars a square foot, then the numbers work. The one thing we're trying to find out right now is, I bought this land over a year ago for twenty-seven dollars a square foot, it's very hard to make those numbers work. Now, the one thing that we are learning from Tyrone, from the city, is the bonding that goes along with it and the financing that goes along with it. But as we're trying to get bids and plans and drawings and stuff like that, to shut that project down that was bought and designed under current policy to try to rewrap that around and move it back and put it back in Terry Stroh's hands to redraw it, I mean, you're talking fifty thousand dollars, just architectural fees, added on top of twenty-seven dollars a square foot, added on top of, I mean, it was a nightmare trying to move from all one-bedrooms to ones and twos and efficiencies, and it was another twelve thousand dollars in fees. So we're trying to accommodate affordable, low-income, that's a whole different game, to be honest with you. Mr. Strand, Commissioner Strand, I just know this from the tenants that live in my buildings. To think that in a roundabout way that housing doesn't create jobs, I think is wrong, because I have people living in apartments that work at or go to the many restaurants and bars that are downtown. I guarantee you, they would not be there if it weren't for having more of a neighborhood feel and more apartment people living downtown. I just, I live down here, I office down here, I build down here, and my daughter runs my apartment building, so we know these people that reside in our units very, very well. And a lot of them become very good friends of ours. So I just, look at somebody living out in West Acres area. If they're a waitress or a waiter, are they going to just work out there, are they going to drive all the way downtown to have a job? I mean, there's a good majority of my tenants that aren't just college students, they're not just young professionals, I mean, they're struggling, working jobs, and going to school. So just a note.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And you know, Mr. Craig, I don't want to quibble about the value of the work you do in our city and the contribution you make as an investor. I just want to study the policies that others implement, like, it's my loose understanding that St. Louis Park, their definition of affordability is fifty percent of the medium income. So I don't know what all that means for us. I know we have a lot of folks that don't live on living wages, but I don't know what that means. And the issue of low-income versus affordable housing, I think these are terms for us to get our arms around. So I hope we can work together, and I'd prefer us, I'm not sure this will pass tonight. And I'd rather have us see if there's a way forward, or we're partnering, rather than having us hit a roadblock in light of your track record and your investment process that you're underway with this project already.
And to answer your, Mr. Pepcorn, I mean, yes, I would definitely work with you guys. I mean, Saturday, I was at the Neighborhood Coalition meeting, educating people on that. I've managed Section forty-two low-income housing, so I know the paperwork dilemmas and things that go with that with qualifying people and recertifying a year later, and then year two, three, four, five. So it's not even just creating that, it's a matter of having somebody that's going to manage those units, be it for Fargo Housing Authority, myself, the city, whoever it is that owns that entity, and when it's done. So there's a lot of, like you said, there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Commissioner Gary?
Just to point a fact for everybody, the tax exempt review committee, their job is to ensure that projects are eligible per our guidance to qualify, okay? That's all they do. They don't say it's a good idea, a bad idea. They look at the numbers and say, yep, it meets everything that we've said it should meet, right? Then we decide. There's a reason why we vote on every single one of these. Otherwise, it would just go through when the tax exempt said, yep, it qualifies. Good, go ahead. So incentives are not automatic, they shouldn't be automatic, that's a very poor way to run a city. There might be good ideas, bad ideas, and that's why we make the big bucks up here to do that stuff. So, yes, reviewing the policy, good idea, you know, because we're moving that way anyway. But at the end of the day, we have to decide, like Dave has done, do I support apartments with incentives, things like, I mean, all of us have to do that, and that's why we have these discussions.
So, Mr. Chairman--
Commissioner Pepcorn.
What I, I don't support John's proposal, but what I would support is, if Jesse's willing to work with us to try to get this, because it's a good project, and so if there's any way that we could even delay it and get a chance to work this out, that's what I would be in favor of, because I don't support us building any more apartments. That's not our, but I do, if there's a portion of low income, or however you want to define it, I think that's, I think we all agree, we're going to have to put effort into that. That is what we are going to be focusing on, and so I would support something like that. Thank you.
Who would define that? Who would define low-income versus affordable? I mean, that's, give me some guidance.
The other thing, Jesse, that's why I would like to have you involved, because I think there's two different definitions. Like we talked about, you can go by the average income and fifty percent of that. I think we have to look at, but the other, and what is low-cost? So I would rather have you be part of this, because to me, you're a valuable part of this whole thing. And so I know this is frustrating for you, but you can help us, and I hope that's--
You might want a couple people in this arena involved, Dave.
No, without, no.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Commissioner Pepcorn, I could have advanced a motion to lay this on the table, but that would have squelched a debate like that, and we wouldn't have an opportunity to discuss it like we are, and to get a sense of each other's positions going forward and willingness to go forward. So I didn't want to advance it till late on the table or to table it indefinitely or definitely. I also don't want to see another project come again until we've resolved this. So that's all I'm essentially asking for. By a moratorium, it means, set this aside until the tax exempt review committee works this topic and vets it, and comes up, if they do, with recommendations, and then if there are changes or not, then we can come back to the table with this and any other pending projects. So that's my approach to it. I don't, that's, I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Strand, I'd remind you, before we had policy looked at, you said you wanted to see policy, so this one does agree with policy, and you're putting a moratorium on all future things coming to us. The proper way would be to address the policy issue which you talked about, affordable housing, and follow the present policy, which we did on many of the other projects that came before us before. So just to remind you that you, in the past, have said, if this follows present policy, I'll follow it. So this, when you put a moratorium on it, it oftentimes will stifle any type of development project in the community.
Thank you, Mayor. And I've generally voted against these, even though the policy allows it. I think I voted for one when I was very new, so, and yet, there's a shifting sentiment. Now, again, I don't want to predict votes, but, so, I prefer to get a policy I can vote for, and I don't like policies that I don't want to vote for, but I can't vote for this one when it follows the policy as it is now.
Ben Hushka?
Sure, I'd just like to make a couple comments regarding what Commissioner Gary just spoke about. For the record, the tax review committee did bring a recommendation for approval. However, we did have discussion about Commissioner Strand's low-income element that he has proposed. There was also a committee member that brought up the possibility of, I believe he called it like a no-harm clause on some of these, rather than granting the hundred percent for the first five years, retaining the current taxes that the property is paying now, so it would be anything over and above the current, so nothing-- now, so it would be anything over and above the current, so nothing on the tax rolls gets taken off. But when we got into that discussion, we realized that, like Commissioner Gary said, our responsibility is to make recommendations based on policy, not set policy. So, we felt that, that discussion had to be at a different meeting, not at this one. So, we felt compelled to recommend approval based on current policy.
Any other discussion? Roll call on the vote, please.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Motion doesn't pass for lack of majority. Do I have another motion?
I'll move to deny the application.
Is there a second? Do I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, can we delay it for one, uh, what, I don't know what the terminology, but just to delay it for our next meeting? And between then and now, meet with Jesse, Lynn Fundingsland, maybe Jim Gilmore and any, anybody else, uh, any of the other commissioners that wants to meet, and Bruce, and whoever wants to, you're all invited. But, well, but to try to get, get a low, a low-cost housing component into this project.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion for discussion. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Pepcorn, as chair of the tax exempt review committee, would that be your expectation that this wouldn't be just for this project? But that it might be a policy we could explore and consider that would be for all projects?
The motion is just for this project, but I, I, and I've told you that we would address it, and I apologize for not doing it until now, but, but the, the tax exempt commu-, uh, committee would put that on our next, it would be an agenda item for our next meeting.
As a policy recommendation or a project recommendation?
Oh, come on, man.
No, I'm just curious, because I want to follow policy.
Well, I, I would anticipate that it would be a policy change, uh, but, but I, I don't think that would, I, I would, I would, here's what the promise I will make you, John. It will be on the, it will be on the tax exempt on our agenda, but I'm not going to promise you it will be, action will be taken that time. I think it will take us some time, and I think we should all be involved in this discussion about what, because there's some technical terms that we need to clarify about what qualifies as low-income housing, and it's, it's a complicated issue. Are, are you satisfied with that, Commissioner?
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go along with that, knowing my intention and desire, and I believe, uh, the broader desire, is to come to a policy which then depersonalizes these decisions. It's not about who they are, it's not about, it's about the policy. And, and I'm okay with that approach if it gets us there or it leads us closer to that and it doesn't put the kibosh on, I'm not sure that word is right, but on this project entirely right now.
I mean, part of the challenge you have, Commissioner Strand, is what's affordable housing? What's low-income housing and what's affordable housing? So, I think part of the task of that committee would be to define it, if you say it's fifty percent or what it is. So, I think if the commissioners are reasonable with compromise and try to figure that out, because that's one of the tasks you're going to have to do, is come up with what is affordable housing? Is it six hundred? Is it four hundred? Is it five hundred? Or what is it? When I'm out and talking to the market, we've talked to some of the developers, and they say some of the affordable housing we have in town in low-income aren't filling up. They have twenty percent vacancies. So, are we truly not have affordable housing? So, I do think you have to have a lot of people at that table to discuss that. I think we're concerned about affordable housing for our workforce development in the community. All of us are concerned about that, and we'd like, like to help define that. That six eighty-five didn't sound too bad to me, as far as when you compare it to one thousand, one hundred that other people are paying, but what is our wage out there? Well, you know, what's our average wage and what are we paying? So, it may take a little while for everybody to figure that out, but, I mean, you're comfortable with your definitions and can come to those relatively quickly. Is it fifty percent? Is it forty percent? Planning needs to jump in there and tell us what we're finding out in the market as well. So, I think you're going to have a complex committee meet. You're going to have to have developers, planning, we're going to have to have Hushka, we're going to have to have a variety of people at that table to help us figure it out. It may take a little longer than one month. Other time, tax exempt committee took almost a year to come to a solution, right, the last time we did this. So, it may take a little while, but, uh, I, I think it's a great, uh, direction to go. Commissioner Strand first, and then Commissioner.
All we're doing is coming up a little looser definition of what I call the moratorium, but I'm okay with it. It's just a shorter moratorium.
Fair enough.
Commissioner Gary?
Just real quick, these are, affordable housing and low-income housing are, I think, nationally recognized definitions. It's, it's a percent of your income, basically, is what it is. So, that should be easy to come up with right away, just so as our, you know, our, our crew out there knows that, to look at there first, that these are well-known definitions.
Well, I think, I think the commissioners are going to figure that out relatively soon, but if it's fifty percent, forty percent, thirty percent, got to figure out what's the medium wage.
Eric Johnson?
Just one little detail. I'm not sure if I ended up catching exactly what the delay was to. My only point of order is just if you continue it to a date and time certain, that allows Ben to come back without having to re-notice a public hearing. So, was that a month or?
Well, I, I would, maybe, Ben, what do you, how much time do you think? Do you think, is two weeks too little? And is four weeks appropriate to continue it?
I think part of the concern we have is a holiday right now. We've got Thanksgiving, then we've got Christmas company, so reasonably, probably be a month.
Well, I think, yeah, I guess we'd probably have to look at that statute to see if rep publication... Well, it would need to be, I would suspect, still under that statute, which the publication would take a month. You have to publish two consecutive weeks, and the hearing can be no less than fifteen days after the last publication.
When we started the hearing, and so it is delaying it to a date and time certain, so we should be fine under your notice.
Okay.
That's all I was getting at.
Okay.
I thought you said two weeks, and then we were talking about.
But the other thing is, so Jesse, if you don't mind, so if we continue it for four weeks, is that, is that too long for you as far as, uh, that's the other thing, we want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing the project from the time.
Well, I'll be honest with you, the, the project's already dead. I mean, no matter how you guys vote, I'll, I made a promise to you, I'll partake in the discussions. I'll help you guys through this as much as I can with my input. But if this doesn't get the full tenure pilot, I already told you, there's no way I can make low-income or affordable work in this project.
Yeah, I got you, but.
So, the delay doesn't matter.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking you, if we continue this, we can still vote on this, but I'm just saying, if, will four weeks be too long of a time? Or is, is that still, would, would the project still be viable?
Based on what Commissioner Strand said, and yourself, unless there's a component of affordable or low-income housing in a project, you won't vote for it, correct?
Correct.
I cannot make affordable by definition or low-income make work in this project, period.
Okay.
So, I'll email Sanford, they'll buy it.
But Jesse, I think one of the things you need to do is a lot of education has to go on here, so one of the reasons when you say that, I can't make that work, maybe you can't make that work in that apartment, but that other apartment you're talking about coming up further is something that you want to go forward with. I think in a committee, some of that can come out. You've got to show, and you're honest in what you show.
Yep.
Why affordable housing doesn't work in this project. I think we can't go through that detail tonight, but what Commissioner Pepcorn has given is giving an opportunity to have a discussion. As of tonight, these two commissioners would not vote for it. Now, maybe with, uh, looking into it, what you're talking about, they discover some things, because we also don't know what affordable housing is in Fargo right now.
Right. And to me, affordable by not a national definition, a six seventy-five, six eighty-five apartment downtown is affordable. Changing the rules mid-game, like I said, I bought this property a, a year ago, and now changing the rules on me? I'm sorry, it's not fair. However you want to define it. If you guys want to change policy and then the rule's set, that's great, but if there's stuff that takes two years or a year for these properties to come to fruition, these projects, who's going to keep doing that? Who's going to go buy properties, twenty-seven dollars a square foot, and then six months, worry for six months or a year down the road that's going to change? You can't. You can't, you can't do that. No one's going to keep doing that, I guarantee you. I won't keep doing it.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Gilmore in the room? Jim, could you, uh, apprise us of the current status of apartment vacancies across town and downtown in particular?
I think the, uh, metro-wide, it's about eight point eight percent right now. But, you know, a lot of these developers, why they're still building is because there's certain sub-markets. So, for instance, I've, developers in downtown tell me they need more one-bedroom apartments as well as near-end DSU, so those, those are in short supply. Uh, that's, we just had a bunch of apartments come online in September, so I think the vacancy rate was ten percent, but normally, it takes about a year to kind of rent up a building before you really understand what the vacancy rate is.
And if I might continue, that's a higher vacancy rate than we would want, isn't it?
Probably the ideal, I don't know if there's an ideal vacancy rate, depends on whether you're, um, own the building or whether you're renting, but, um, generally, six percent is, five to six percent is a good range to be in. It provides some opportunity, uh, for people to kind of negotiate on rents, yet it provides a reasonable rate of return. I, I think what's happened in our market over the last three years is, we did a housing study in two thousand and fourteen, we projected the need for about, about five hundred and seventy-five apartments per year. The construction has been at eight hundred and fifty per year. So, you know, I think they've probably overshot the market right now by maybe eight hundred units, and if, if you took those out of the equation, our vacancy rate would be about six percent. So, uh, we're seeing a lot of apartment developers kind of pause and, and not proceed, maybe wait a year. Others are proceeding because they're looking at the projected growth, and they're figuring that over the next twenty years, the vacancy rate will be more in that five percent range.
So, it goes without saying, there's another component of our measures of what we do with public exemptions and incentives. And, and I'm, I just would want to study that a little more as well, whether we're exacerbating an existing situation or, or improving it, and, and especially with, with public funds.
Eric Johnson?
Uh, December eighteenth, your regular city commission meeting, five fifteen, would be two meetings.
So, you want to continue to that time? Would that be your motion?
That's my motion, yep.
The second are okay? I guess that's me.
You were the second, weren't you?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
We did get a majority, so we'll move it to that time and see what comes out of discussions. We're going to move to the next second item is Renaissance Zone Project at the Power Plate Meals LLC for commercial leases project located at six twenty-one Second Avenue North. Planner Derek will point to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, uh, yes, this is a Renaissance Zone lease, uh, commercial lease project. Uh, it's a part of a larger rehab, uh, project, which is DFI Roberts LLC. That is the, the wrap portion of our Roberts Commons Garage. Uh, this particular lease would occupy eight hundred, uh, nine hundred and eighty-six square feet, looking to occupy the space by April of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the applicant, Power Plate Meals, does estimate a total of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars of income tax exemption, uh, over the five-year term. Again, no, uh, property tax exemption as a part of this particular application. That's a part of the larger approved project of DFI Roberts, uh, that was approved back in two thousand and sixteen. Mike Zimny, representing the, the property ownership group, is here, uh, as well as the business owner, Al Heinz, uh, if you have any questions. We are recommending approval.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Closed public hearing, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Mahoney?